City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded May 16, 2022.
At seven o'clock, we will call the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Stevens Point to order. Clerk, could we please get a roll call?
Christiansen.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keemer.
Here.
Sarah Zua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Niebohne's Excuse. Shuda.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Fishler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Please join me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. As you probably know, May 14th was Flag Day. It was also proclaimed by Governor Evers last year to be the Mung Lao Veterans Day. We have Memorial Day coming up, and all of those events are really tied together. And in recognition of that, we have our poppy princess Julia and our junior poppy princess Jalen joining us tonight, and they're going to do a presentation. I'll leave it up to them. The, I want to welcome, we have some new Alders and newly elected Alders and some re-elected Alders, so I want to welcome everybody back to our new term. Welcome to Alder Person Dean Shuda and Alder Person Ron Carlson. Congratulations, and I know we're going to do some pretty great things together. Congratulations again to Alder Person Johnson, who is again elected Council President. Hopefully, we can reestablish those meetings that we haven't been able to keep for a while.
Long time.
It has. I want to recognize this month several things that have happened since last month. We have a new police chief sitting in the back. Bob Cuso was sworn in earlier. We have a new Assistant Chief. Dana Williams was also sworn in earlier. Do we have a new Assistant Fire Chief yet, or is that swearing in happening later?
May 26.
May 26, we will be swearing in our new Assistant Fire Chief, or Fire and Operations, right? And that is going to be happening. And Frank Suhon, a friend of mine and employee of the city for over 40 years in the Water and Wastewater Department, has finally retired. I worked with his wife Nancy at First Financial and then Associated Bank. She retired April 1st, and Frank took his liberties, gave Nancy a month off, and retired earlier this month. So we want to thank Frank Suhon for his dedicated decades of service, seriously, four decades of service to the City of Stevens Point. So thank him very much for that. We will move on now to persons who wish to address the mayor on a specific agenda item should register their request at this time. That, of course, are the sheets at the door, and I forgot all about it, Sandy. I'm so sorry. Sandy, who is the former Administrative Assistant to the mayor, is now our new Human Resources Manager. So welcome Sandy as well. She's still filling in the duties until we get the Assistant squared away and hired, so thank you for doing that. But if you want to register, now is the time to do it. Sandy has those sheets. If you want to speak on any agenda item other than a public hearing, if there's a public hearing, and I don't think we have any of those tonight either, we don't. If there were a public hearing, you would be required to identify yourself until then. Everybody who wants to speak on any agenda item is registered? We don't have anybody online, so we're good there. Sandy, you want to bring those up? Do we have anybody who wants to speak on item number four? Thank you. All right, so item number four, Dave Iden. We will now have persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding any non-agenda item. Mr. Iden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dave Iden, 1008 Matilda Street. I guess I just want to pose these as questions to you. I know it's not a question and answer. I had inquired in the past about the CN Bridge and the conditions it's in. I don't know what committee here handles that, with that being the case, if anybody has contacted them to get a look at that bridge and see.
You're talking the Church Street?
Yep, yep.
That's actually the railroads.
It is. However, there is some concern just looking at the condition of it from the bottom. It's considerably rusty and needing of attention. Like I say, I know it would be up to them to do something about it, however, given the debate over infrastructure and what's been going on, there's an infrastructure item that I think bears some attention to. I also did mention the Banshell in the past. At the time, I believe it was Park Commissioner had mentioned something about they were just in the process of doing a review and an assessment on what we're going to do there also. So we maintain that instead of it deteriorating to the point where it gets so costly to repair.
What I'll do, Dave, is I will have our Public Works Director Scott Beddun and our Public Utilities Director Joel Lemke contact Canadian National and see what their plan is for that area. We don't have the authority to dictate it necessarily, but those are the two most responsible people to contact, CN, Public Works and Utilities.
Okay, I appreciate it. Like I say, that's just, it's kind of part of our community in a sense, and I've been driving under that thing for over 50 years on my bike, and it's, I don't think it's been painted since all of that time, so.
No, and we still have problems. As you know, when it floods, people drive past the eight-foot-by-six-foot lighted glowing barriers that say "Do Not Enter," and then our Fire Chief has, or former Fire Chief, has to rescue them from their vehicles.
Right, right. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The new chief will do that, too. Will he? I don't think he's quite as smart. You guys remember this, right? Chief Finn was there, and he had to jump out of his car and go save this person who drove past barriers.
Michigan Avenue.
All right, JB, you're on. Lance, you want to talk about the special event permits? Didn't we approve that already? So, okay, so we'll use item number four, the non-agenda item, because, yeah, go ahead. You're on.
I was told that this special event will come up, and I was here to represent. My name, how you doing? Good afternoon. My name is Lance Lewis. I'm currently Head of Security at Spash High School, and I'm here on behalf of Create, Forge County. This year, following a second annual, we will have the Juneteenth celebration. We will commemorate that on June 18th this year at Piffenah Park. To my understanding, I believe those permits are in order.
Clerk, correct?
Right, okay. So I'm just here to say, you know, as a community, we strive to serve, ensure that Stevens Point is a great place to live. We are making diversity and inclusion, all types, an priority. We invite you to join us for our second annual Community Juneteenth Celebration. We will share with the community the importance of the freedom of the day of African Americans across the country, and we will have fun, celebrated, planned, filled with food, music, and family fun.
Thank you, Lance. When was that again?
June 18th.
Where?
Piffenah Park.
I just want to make sure. Everybody has a second chance to hear it.
From 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
There you go. Because it was a great event last year outside Create. When you put "special event" on there, I thought you were talking about the changes to our special event permit. Juneteenth is actually on the consent agenda, and you're all good there.
Really?
You are. And we will see you at the event.
I appreciate it. Hope everyone shows up in a great time.
Great. Thanks, Lance. All right, our speaker list is exhausted, so we will now move into our presentation. My favorite part every year, and we've missed it the last couple of times because of COVID. It's seriously one of the most moving things I've ever seen presented. And this year, we have Julia and Jalen, our junior and senior poppy princesses, who have a message for you and a reminder. So ladies.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Wiesa and the Common Council, for letting me speak tonight. My name is Julia Sappa, and I am a junior at Spash. I am currently serving as Senior Poppy Princess of the American Legion Auxiliary, Baron Scribner, Unit Six in Stevens Point. Together with me tonight is Junior Poppy Princess Jalen Tep. As Senior Poppy Princess, I bring awareness about the poppy, which is a symbol to honor the fallen and support the living heroes who have worn our nation's uniform. I have a few history lessons to provide to you about the end Flanders Fields poem and about how the poppy princess came to be. After World War I, the poppy grew abundantly throughout Europe, scientists say possibly the extra lime in the soil caused by wartime rubble. In 1920, the poppy became the official flower of the American Legion family. The U.S. Congress designated the Friday before Memorial Day as National Poppy Day, as requested by the American Legion. The distribution of poppies over Memorial Day weekend became a national program of the American Legion in 1924 and still remains to this day through poppy princesses. The symbol of the poppies, which provide us with remembrance, were established in the poem "In Flanders Fields" in the year 1915. From 1914 to 1918, Flanders Fields was a major battle theater on the Western Front during the First World War. One million soldiers from more than 50 different countries were wounded, missing, or killed in action here in Flanders Fields. The poem was written by a Canadian Medical Corps doctor, Lieutenant Colonel John McCray, who was serving with the Field Artillery Brigade in Belgium. His close friend died in May of 1915 and was buried in the cemetery next to his dressing station, which severely affected him. He wrote this poem as a way to express the anguish of his loss. Lieutenant Colonel McCray was not happy with his poem when he finished it, so he threw it away, but one of his fellow officers found it and was so moved that he sent it to the media in London. The poem "In Flanders Fields" was first published in England's Punch Magazine in December of 1915, one and a half years after World War I began. Within months, this poem came to symbolize the sacrifices of all who were fighting during this war. Today, the poem continues to be a part of Remembrance Day ceremonies throughout the world. I will conclude my time with you tonight by reciting the poem "In Flanders Fields", written by Lieutenant Colonel John McCray, in an effort to help everyone understand the experiences of service members and their family members before, during, and after wartime. Its simple but effective narration of the horror in the trenches has made it the most famous war poem ever. "In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow. Between the crosses, row on row, that mark our place, and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing fly. Scarc'd heard amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago we lived. Felt dawn, saw sunset glow. Loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe. To you from failing hands we throw the torch. Be yours to hold it high. If ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders Fields." Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Taylor, if you need to, I think they'll be available for a press conference shortly. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate everything you're doing, and thank you for the families coming out to support her, both of them. So we will now move on to our next presentation, and that is by the City Attorney Logan Beveridge. Because we have new Alder Persons, and I know that you guys are both going to the
We came back.
League of Wisconsin. You did already, okay.
Friday.
But the City Attorney is just going to cover some of the basics of open meetings and quorums.
Okay, so open meetings law in the state of Wisconsin starts at Chapter 19, Section 81. And first off, I'm just going to read aloud the statement of policy that it begins with, which is, "In recognition of the fact that a representative government of the American type is dependent upon an informed electorate, is declared to be the policy of this state that the public is entitled to the fullest and most complete information regarding the affairs of government as is compatible with the conduct of government business." Now, that sounds very, very thorough, and it's meant to be. And basically, the way that the courts look at open meetings law is that if there's vagueness or uncertainty in the language, or some type of scenario that, you know, brings ambiguity into play, it's the policy of the courts to resolve those ambiguities in favor of openness, in favor of public access to government meetings and transparency with regards to the affairs of government bodies. So obviously, the basic definitions that you have to worry about here are government body, meeting, that sort of thing. Because if you don't have a government body, then none of this applies, and if you don't have a meeting, then none of this applies either. So a government body, it's not based on what the authority of the body is, it's based upon the manner of creation. And what I mean about that is for something to be a government body, it has to be created by constitution, statute, rule, or order of a governing authority. So for instance, obviously, the City Council is a government body. Why? Because it is created under Chapter 62 of the state statutes. Similarly, subunits of the Common Council are government bodies. And things that exist pursuant to the city ordinances, such as the Bike and Ped Commission, BPSSC, is created by an ordinance of the Common Council or a rule of the Common Council. And even though that body only makes recommendations, they don't have final authority on anything, they're still created to a rule or order, and therefore, their meetings are considered open meetings. The case that most recently addressed some kind of unanswered questions with regards to what is and is not a government body came out of Appleton and involved a committee that was put together to do a curriculum review. And this was a body that was not made up of school board members or anything like that, but it was created to a rule created by the school district administration that was utilizing authority granted to them by the school board. And because it was written into a rule, the courts did consider that to be a body subject to open meetings law. So for most purposes, though, anything that you're involved with as Alder Persons is most likely going to be considered a government body, which then brings you to the questions regarding what is a meeting? Well, a meeting is defined by, first, that it is a gathering of the members to engage in government business, to exercise the authority that is granted to the body, and that there is the requisite number of members in attendance at that gathering. Now, when I say a gathering, you know, a convening of members, that doesn't have to be in person, and it doesn't even have to be simultaneous. I mean, obviously, we've all been at plenty of Zoom meetings over the last couple of years, so the in-person element is not essential. And when I say they don't have to be simultaneous, that gets to the idea of walking quorum, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, which is that if one Alder Person talks to another who talks to another who talks to another, all about the same topic, with an intent to achieve consensus on something that will be before the body or could be before the body, then that does add up to a number of people where then you evaluate it under the numbers test. Now, the numbers test is, is there a sufficient number of the members present or involved, if it's a walk-on quorum type situation? Is there a sufficient number to either act, i.e. just, you know, a simple majority on most items or most types of tasks, or to preclude action of the government body? And this is one of the finer points, which is you can have a negative quorum on things that require a supermajority. So for instance, a budget amendment takes a two-thirds majority, and therefore, less than a majority of the council could constitute a quorum for something of that type. And we do have a few things that require a three-quarters majority. And there's things like overriding a veto takes more than a simple majority, et cetera, et cetera. With regards to the purpose, one of the questions that came up years and years ago, and I believe this is actually when I was on the council, was there was a meeting that was going to be for informational purposes only. It was just a presentation being given. There wasn't going to be any votes. There wasn't going to be any action taken up. The law is very clear that that still constitutes an exercise of the body's authority. So even if it's just an informational presentation, it is considered a meeting, and all the other requirements of a meeting do flow from there. Examples of things that are not considered a meeting or not considered, you know, that don't satisfy the purpose test would be something just like a circulation of a memo. You know, one Alder Person can send a memorandum to the entire membership of the body. The problems can arise if people start responding to that. So sort of a one-way communication, a press release, something of that nature. It doesn't have the conversational exchange element that's necessary to trigger any of those sort of walking quorum issues or anything like that. So if the purpose element is satisfied and the number element is satisfied, and in fact, actually, if just the number element is satisfied alone, it does create a rebuttable presumption that it is for the purpose of conducting government business. So if six or seven Alder Persons are in the same place at the same time, it is rebuttably presumed that that is for the purpose of carrying out official business. Now, like I said, that is a rebuttable presumption, i.e., well, we all just happened to show up at the place for dinner. I mean, it was an accident. There was no intent. We did not actually engage in any business. If you're able to rebut that presumption, then it's okay. It's not actually a violation. Now, I obviously recommend if a bunch of you show up to the same place at the same time, you know, gathering together where a bunch of other people might see you, might not be the best idea, even if you're just getting together to talk about gardening. You don't want to create a situation where you have to rebut that presumption, if at all possible. Now, obviously, things like email, electronic communications, you know, those have been part and parcel of government business for 30, 35 years now. Oddly enough, our statutes have not really kept up with that. They are quite far behind, at least with regards to open meetings. So that, believe it or not, it's never really gone properly to the Appeals Court or the State Supreme Court with regards to electronic communications. However, I certainly wouldn't bet on those not being considered meetings if you're communicating electronically. So suppose that something is a meeting, then what do you have to do? Well, you have to have a notice to the public, and you have to conduct the meeting in open session, or if it's something that's subject to the closed session, exceptions under Section 1985, you have to apply that properly and have a vote to go into a closed session. So if you're going to issue a notice, the requirements pertain to whom it has to be issued, how it has to be posted, you do have to post it in the official newspaper, which obviously we just approved recently. And then there's a timetable for publishing it as well. And that actually does come up from time to time. I'm sure some of you have experienced that we have to meet on something on very short notice. The law says that you can have a minimum of 24 hours' notice of a meeting. However, there is actually an exception for as little as four hours' notice for emergency situations. Now, you know, the type of thing that I would envision for that would be, for example, if we had some sort of infrastructure emergency that needed to be addressed absolutely immediately, and you needed authorization for spending, or you needed authorization for some sort of contract or something like that, you know, we would pull out all the stops on the staff level to find a way to make that happen without having to have a vote of the council. But I can envision some scenarios in which it might be necessary to do that. So the publication, it is the obligation of the chief presiding officer or their designee to give a notice. It has to be given to the public, to any members of the news media who submit a written request for notice, and then, of course, like I mentioned, the official newspaper. The posting, quote-unquote, "to the public" is literally physical postings that we do down at City Hall, the glass case by the clerk's office. There's also a glass case out in the front where you'll mostly see notices from the county and the courts pertaining to sheriff sales, all types of different things that have to be posted publicly. We also post things on the city's website. Unsurprisingly, the posting on the website has essentially no legal effect whatsoever, but it is, you know, a nice convenience, and it's how most people probably actually find out about meetings. Certain other types of actions, you know, if it's anything involving a public hearing, other types of specific things scattered through the statutes, we have to notice in more particular ways, and obviously, we handle those on a case-by-case basis. Couple examples of those, you know, also anything pertaining to TIF creation, it's got its own notice provision. You have to publish a Class 1 notice in the official newspaper, et cetera. A notice has to contain, obviously, the time, date, place, and subject matter of the meeting. More detailed information about a closed session, you have to, I'm sure you're all accustomed to seeing the citation to the actual exception that applies, and also a sort of vague enough but specific enough description of the content. The law there says it has to be sufficient for a member of the public to glean a sense of whether or not it looks like it's being applied properly. And sometimes, there is some fine tuning that has to occur with regards to the language there, and usually, I'm the one giving the bad news about we need to make this more specific. And, you know, for instance, if you see things like, you know, for a strategic real estate acquisition where we don't want, you know, the market to shift on it prior to acquisition, usually what we'll do is specify, you know, which TIF district it's within. Or if it's not within a TIF district, we'll specify, to whatever extent we're able to, a more general geographic area or a purpose for which it is, you know, acquisition of land in, you know, congruent with the park plan or something like that. So just something that somebody can, a member of the public, can evaluate whether they think we're applying that correctly. So with regards to content, courts have been very clear that things that are very vague, just like new business, old business, consent agenda, you know, obviously, our consent agenda is usually, you know, two-thirds of a page because we have all the bullet points of things below it. And then if we're going to bring anything out for individual discussion, we have a motion to take that separately, and then we have a separate vote on that, which is, that stems from the requirements to keep minutes. And actually, this is a little wrinkle that I had never fully thought about until today when I was preparing this, which is that if you're going to have comments about the consent agenda in general and then vote on it in general, that's okay, because you're not having separate votes on these things, and people can tell which comments pertain, you know, generally to it. But if you want to discuss something separately and then have a vote on it separately, the public needs to be able to have a record in the minutes of which comments pertain to that vote, as opposed to the comments that pertain to the vote on the rest of it. Now, I've said, you know, internally at City Hall, I've been saying for years that our minutes, the way we do them, is usually sort of this halfway world between traditional minutes and a transcript. It's sort of a quasi-transcript, which we're really not required to do that. It just has to be a record of what the motions were, what the other parliamentary procedural actions were, and what the actual vote was, whether it's, you know, ayes, nays, you know, unanimous consent, or if there's a roll call, obviously, the record of the roll. However, we do take more, you know, complete written minutes, just sort of as a courtesy of the public. There's certainly nothing wrong with doing that, and then, of course, we're recording it as well. There is a requirement to take minutes in closed session, and the law does contemplate the ability to vote on certain things in closed session. We tend to not do that, and I think of that as just being sort of a policy choice that we've made here, where to the greatest extent possible, we don't take votes on things in closed session, even though there are some situations in which you can. However, the closed session minutes would really only need to reflect what those votes are, if any are taken. The other way that the content aspects come up, and this obviously comes up, you know, quite a bit more frequently, is when conversation just starts to stray a little bit from what's actually listed on the agenda. Usually, I usually don't even have to say anything, you know, a member of the body or the mayor, whomever, the chair will say, hey, we need to get this back on track. And the risk there is that you venture off into subject matter that members of the public might have a great interest in, but having read the agenda, they would have had no clue that that was going to be discussed that night. And it's just unfair to them because, oh, I might have had something to say about that topic, but that wasn't actually listed on there. With regards to the idea of something being an action item versus a non-action item, you do not need to specify that something is an action item. It's implied that if something's on the agenda, it's there so that the body can take action on it, but you can state that something's for discussion only or information only. That does preclude you from taking action on it, but sometimes, obviously, that can be a useful thing to do. You can deviate from the order of agenda items. Like if you, out of nowhere, have 30 people that show up on something unexpectedly and all want to talk about it, you can say, we're going to move that up to the beginning as a courtesy to those people. There's nothing wrong with that. The order is not set in stone unless there's something on there that does specify a time. For instance, when we have those nights where there's a council meeting For instance, when we have those nights where there's a council meeting interspersed with committee meetings, and we specify what time council's going to start, we do have to adjourn the one meeting, you know, call council to order, adjourn that, go back. But it's also possible, we don't ever really do this, to say, we will discuss agenda item number six at seven-thirty. Well, you have to stick with that if you do it, which I'd just say, why would you ever put a time in there for that? You can also skip an agenda item and just not address it that night. Just because something is on the agenda, it does not require that you'd actually take it up, but that would just be, you know, sort of by consensus of the group, whether or not you want to take it up that night. Accessibility of the public. It doesn't mean much if you have a meeting open to the public, but it is physically inaccessible. Generally, things are to be held in public buildings. You can hold something in a private facility, it's not a great idea. Obviously, we don't ever really do that. You also have to hold something at a geographic location that is reasonably accessible to people. There is a case that, it was held that having meetings about something, I believe it was a school district, that was holding some meetings forty miles from the actual district. The court said, no, that's not okay. You do have to be mindful of the size of the venue. I mean, you can see we have a max capacity of forty-nine in here. Chief, fifty, forty-nine?
Four-nine.
We're doing just fine tonight. Some nights, we do obviously have the overflow room. That's, it would be preferable to have one room that could hold everyone, but I think that's probably okay. I can't imagine a court getting too upset about that type of setup. But you do have to be mindful of that and take it into account. It is possible to have meetings that incorporate remote-location-type things, like, for example, Historic Preservation Design Review Committee. Sometimes, they do field trips down to a building to go and take a look at it and make some decisions about things. But when they issue their agenda, they have to say, you know, we're going to call the meeting to order at this location, and then the body's going to be going to eight-twenty-four Main Street, or wherever it is, you know, for agenda item number three, to consider a facade grant, or something like that. The place that this aspect came up a few years ago, the bike-ped committee wanted to do a sort of traveling audit of different intersections in different traffic points, and I had to be the stick in the mud on that one to say, like, you know, in theory, you could do that. You could have a laundry list of, you know, fifteen different intersections or something like that, but you'd really want to try to specify, here's the time we're going to be at this one, here's the time we're going to be at this one, here's the time we're going to be at this one. And when the body is moving from one of them to the next to the next, nobody should be talking about anything. And then, of course, you can also get into some questions about ADA and accessibility with, you know, for persons that have compromised mobility or anything like that. That all has to be taken into consideration as well. Obviously, we have a pretty open public comment policy here. We've codified that in ordinance as of about six years ago, I think. You are not, by law, required to take public comment unless something is a public hearing. That's sort of the definition of what a public hearing is. Even bodies that don't ever take public comment, if you're going to have something where a public hearing is required, you have to take public comment. For instance, zoning changes, it's one of the big ones. But we allow public comment on just about everything, so we're kind of going above and beyond what the law requires there. With regards to closed-session types, most of you have probably seen most of those. There are a few that are a little more esoteric than what we normally end up looking at. But for example, just mostly for people who are listening here, if something is deliberation on a quasi-judicial trial or a hearing before the body, for instance, I remember back when I was on the council, there was an action to, I can't remember if it was revoke or non-renew a liquor license, this was for the Steel nightclub, if any of you remember that. And there were attorneys for both sides, a bunch of evidence was taken, and then the council was allowed to go into closed session to talk about, what do you think? And that's just to encourage open and honest discussion about what has just been brought forward. And the thought there being that, well, the evidentiary portion of this was done publicly, and any decision that's rendered is going to be done publicly, and the reasons, therefore, are going to be stated. Anything considering dismissal, demotion, licensing, discipline of public employees, typical personnel-type things, obviously, you've all seen items of that type. Also, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of public employees over which you exercise jurisdiction. The idea there being, you want to be able to be honest on employment, or, excuse me, or performance evaluations and that type of thing, without the thought that, ooh, do I really want to say what I think with the thought that this will be made public and embarrass the employee? So there's consideration given for that. There's something in here about probation and parole. You're probably familiar with that one. Nobody else needs to worry about it. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing in public funds, conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Let's say, far and away, that's our most commonly used one. And, you know, not everything is a slam dunk. Not everything for which you might want to be able to do it in closed session under that is necessarily going to work. Unemployment insurance, some of the other very specific things, workers' comp insurance, anything considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of the person referred to, or persons involved in the investigations. That one is always going to require some very careful case-by-case analysis, and thankfully, it does not come up very frequently. Anything where you're conferring with legal counsel, which is giving advice concerning strategy adopted by the body, and this is important here, with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. So you can't have a closed session just for me to give you generalized legal advice, like I'm doing right now, because this doesn't pertain to any existing or potential litigation. And yeah, that's about it. The last one on there is confidential written advice from the Elections Commission. So that's basically all I wanted to go through here today. I was going to mention a couple things about just, well, real quickly, just enforcement. Enforcement is primarily done by district attorneys. Strictly speaking, the Department of Justice can also conduct enforcement on these, but it's on a complaint basis. So essentially, a person has, you know, a member of the public, which can be essentially anybody, has to submit a verified open-meetings-law complaint. And there's actually, you know, in here, there's a sample form for that. And it has to be notarized, it has to be sworn, it has to identify all the pertinent facts. It basically has to be like a miniature version of a criminal complaint, almost, delivered to the district attorney, and then the DA can further investigate and decide whether or not to bring charges. One thing to keep in mind, and this is something that probably trips up, you know, has probably tripped up some people over the years, is that if you are summoned to participate in a meeting, and you believe that it is being conducted in violation of the open-meetings law, you can't, like, you have an obligation to defend yourself, sort of, by, you know, speaking up and saying, I don't think that this is being done properly. And you have to, let me make sure I get the language correct here. Okay, so it's, "Any person who knowingly, quote, attends a meeting held in violation of it violates the law and is subject to a forfeiture of twenty-five to three-hundred dollars for each violation." Any forfeiture, okay. That money goes to the county, by the way, there you go. Unless it's brought by the AG, then it goes to the state of Wisconsin. So the court has defined knowingly as not only positive knowledge of the illegality of the meeting, but also awareness of the high probability of its illegality, or conscious avoidance of awareness of the illegality. So if you just have strong suspicion, you can't, it's not a defense to say, well, I didn't absolutely know, I hadn't been told by the attorney that this was an illegal meeting. But you can raise one of two defenses, which is, A, that the member made or voted in favor of a motion to prevent the violation from occurring, or that the member's votes on all relevant motions prior to the violation were inconsistent with the cause of the violation. So there are some defenses there. If you suspect that a meeting is being conducted illegally, show up and make a fuss about it. And possibly, what will happen is, you know, everyone will agree, and will say, we're going to adjourn this right now, we're going to renotice this in a different manner or for a different time, and then it can be carried out at a later date. So if anyone has any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, City Attorney. And if anybody does have questions regarding any of this, or potential conflicts, or whatever it is, the City Attorney is always your go-to person to answer questions of that nature. Okay?
And just real quick, if any of you didn't look at your email today, this is the Open Records Compliance Guide from the DOJ. I sent a link to this out to everyone today. And I'm going to be sending out the guide for Open Records, as well as a few paragraphs addressing key points that are relevant to your work as alderpersons.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I really got to hand it to you for sticking through this stuff.
Yeah.
Because if I had a choice, honestly, I'd...
Exciting. Very exciting.
They do, there's going to be a test later. Julia, I want fifty words on quorums. See you, guys. Thank you for coming.
I don't think that's going to be on your inbox.
No, probably not. All right. Item number six is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
I would request that item number three from the Finance Committee be pulled and be considered separately, in light of our discussion we just had on open-meeting laws. And just in an effort to be transparent, I think that's a topic that's of enough interest and importance that I think we'd be well-served to have a discussion.
So you want to pull the discussion of possible action authorizing the Department to apply for infrastructure improvement grants?
Yep. Please.
Okay. So we'll have that pulled, Madam President?
Yeah, I made a motion, but don't we have a second and then pull items?
I don't think we've made a motion yet.
I don't know that the pulling of items has necessarily any order. We can pull something from the consent agenda before a motion, right?
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you can act on the one item first before the rest of it.
Okay. So, Madam President, would I be accurate in saying your motion is to approve the consent agenda with item three from the Finance Committee?
Sure, since it was brought forward, unless there are other items other members wish to pull.
Now I need a second.
A second?
Seconded by Dalton. All right. Discussion on everything except item number three from the Finance Committee meeting of May ninth. Seeing and hearing none, the motion is to approve. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Christiansen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Director Badun, are you in the overflow room? If you are, could you come in here, please? Some of the directors have a tendency to sit there.
It's more comfortable.
There he is. All right, before we get started, item number three, the Finance Committee is discussion of possible action on authorizing the Department of Public Works to apply for various infrastructure improvement grants related to the federal infrastructure investment and jobs act, including the STP urban and STP bridge grants. Alderperson, Christiansen, you have the floor.
I guess, I thought it was a very informative discussion during that committee meeting, and I would just ask if Director Badun could just kind of give us a summary of that discussion and its importance to the workings of your department. And just, I just think, because it's directly related to, obviously, items of great interest in this community, if he could just kind of give us a summary of that discussion, he did a very nice job in his presentation before, just talk about the grants that you're in the process of considering.
Sure. As otherwise had presented last week, there's really, there's two of them that we're otherwise looking to chase at the moment, that are coming up here beginning of next month for the application deadlines. One is just another cycle for the STP urban that we're familiar with, that's the grant that we recently were awarded for the southernmost section of Business 51. And so we'd be looking at this on the north section. I guess, you know, a little bit more in there. This is a larger project, simply because part of the concern of even putting the applications together, part of picking really any project that we otherwise do is, you know, what the otherwise called, DOT calls logical termini. We need to figure out what really constitutes a productive, you know, project. So we get this, so this one's going to be about twice roughly the size and scope of what the southern was, which, you know, there's a lot of money out there, how much they want to give us, or give any one entity is always the question. But I figured that's probably still yet our best bet. You know, ideally, we try to keep it small, and quite honestly, I mean, we'll see what happens in August, but we can't make them quite that small. That would be challenging to try to get, you know, really any project, whether it's Business 51 or anything. So we always have to try to find a project that's productive, and that has these, well, as I said, logical termini. So that's what we're otherwise looking for. So that's bigger and really rough. So from North Point to Fourth Avenue, you know, there's enough traffic, there's enough value in there, so that's why we're kind of chasing that. I don't know if I was necessarily that clear on it last time. So this is a nearly three-quarters of a mile stretch. You know, the southern segment was roughly just under half a mile, this is three-quarters, eight-tenths of a mile or so. So it's a fair amount more that we're otherwise looking to get. And even though we had the TID funding as a potential source for it, if we can, of course, offset that, we can get it. So that's really kind of the idea, since the balance of the funding for that would mostly come from TID, we still need to get that done within the expenditure period, so we're still always, you know, chasing that. But it is a matter of trying to sort that out, and even, you know, for myself, I think we kind of lessen our chances, the more money we ask for, we've done that in the past, anyone that was here long enough could remember when we applied for STP urban back shortly after I started, that was one of the issues we had, we had a short time to turn it around, and we really tried to bite off more than, you know, they were willing to give us, and it would have pretty much taken the whole pot of money that they had available for us at the time, and of course, then weren't, even though it was maybe a worthwhile project, wasn't aware. And I do fear in part we're getting maybe close to that, but again, there's a lot more money out there. So I think we still have a very good chance to do it. I think kind of building off of our past successful application also puts us in a position to write a good application, so we're trying to otherwise ride that wave, so to speak, to try to move forward. So that's maybe a bit more than what it is, like I said, but again, it's a matter of picking projects, and it's, you know, as project costs continue to rise, again, going back a couple months, as I spoke here before, you know, twenty to thirty percent increases in costs, these things aren't getting any cheaper. You know, for the same dollar, we're getting less and less, you know, actually constructed, so the more money we can hopefully get in from the grants, you know, the better, and that's what we're really otherwise chasing that for. But yeah, there's always this logical thought process, at least I hope there is, as we put forward to staff to us to look at, is like how we pick these projects to try to be successful. And it's part of the economies of scale, you know, too small a project probably isn't going to see the benefit, even though the numbers may be good for the DOT to say, hey, here's your money. But they're going to say, what's really the benefit of fixing, say, that one block, you know, in amongst this entire corridor, or what are you improving? What level of safety are you doing? What have you done to improve the multimodal, or, you know, the pedestrian environment? So you do need to pick something larger than that, and finding that balance is always kind of a difficult thing to do, because it's very contextual, too, to where you're working in, you know. Several blocks of a residential section may be driven somewhat different, because it may be driven less by the surface elements and more even by the utility elements. I guess, going back to a previous meeting, when I asked here if we could shift our monies from our resurfacing to our reconstruct, so we could predominantly address the utility components, well, that increases the city's component to that as well. So hopefully, I'm not getting off topic here, and this is of value to everyone. Other Christiansen, kind of, with what you're looking for?
Yep. And so what kind of a timeframe are you anticipating? And you have the authorization to submit for, what are you looking at for a timeframe?
So what we're otherwise submitting on that one is the state fiscal year twenty-five, which would fall within the expenditure period there for the TID on that one. It's going to mean that we continue to move forward, and in practice, if we were successful on it, we don't have much time to pause after the thirty percent design, as we're completing yet this year. You know, we are going to have to be willing to move fairly quickly into the final design, just to make sure that we are actually ready to bid, so we can construct in that timeframe.
Earlier, you said that you're waiting to see what happens in August. How would the August referendum potentially impact that?
Oh, boy. Well, I mean, at a million dollars, like you said, this is roughly a ten to twelve-million-dollar project, not all of which, some of that's also utilities, I forget the separation of it, but it's just kind of grasping out of that, six million dollars probably would be the settlement. So, I mean, it's clearly, you know, it would fall within that, you know, categorically through the referendum. Like, but again, like I said, you can't build, unfortunately, you just can't build much Like, but again, like I said, you can't build, unfortunately, you just can't build much for a million dollars, especially as it continues to go up, you know, in, you know, to pick a project that...
Director, I'm going to stop you there because as Logan just said, we're kind of straying from this. This is authorization to apply for grants, not the actual expenditure.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess, yeah, just trying to make sure I'm answering the question, however, Ned, if that's the description of what you're looking for as far as what we're applying for and how it...
No, you just mentioned it, I just...
Oh, yeah, I guess, yeah, kind of wandering mouth, I guess.
Thank you. Alder Person, Christiansen, this I assume was the item you were talking with President Johnson about before the meeting, did it serve the purpose? You got the explanation you needed?
Do you want me to talk about the bridge one as well?
Yes, please.
Well, hang on, I...
That's...
Did that answer the question that you guys had?
I think he's in the process of answering. I, this is, I just think it's important for transparency, for a lot, the information that he shared at that meeting to be shared in this form as well.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not questioning that at all, I just, I know you had talked about this, I just want to make sure we're getting your questions answered.
Well, I don't really, I don't have a specific question, I just wanted to have this, this information shared in this form.
Yeah, just share the information again, make sure everybody's aware of it.
Yes.
Alder Person Shore, did you have a comment about the previous presentation, or can this wait until after the Bridge President, STP Urban, STP Bridge?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, sorry, getting long-winded here. Yeah, so then the other one, which is the local bridge program, looking to others that we did, in fact, I know when I spoke last week, I said part of it was contingent upon AECOM getting our rehabilitation report in, which they did, and that's been accepted by DOT, so they're reviewing that now. And that part, of course, is just, you know, for a bridge that, you know, historically is, ownership has been identified for us, although arguably it's also on a county highway, whose is it? The documentation does otherwise identify that the city has accepted ownership of it since it was constructed in nineteen seventy-one, nothing to the contrary has been found on that. So it clearly is ours, and it has been getting, you know, as, as each inspection goes through, it kind of gets knocked a little bit more. The biggest issue with the bridge is it's just, there's a lot of delamination going at the surface. Most of it structurally is very sound yet, there are a few things that need to be repaired, there's a little bit of, you know, rusting coming through the concrete, you see the staining and stuff, so you know there's water penetrating through there, and a little bit of efflorescence, which is the kind of calcification you see through some of the cracks and stuff through there, so, which is not uncommon of a bridge of its age. There are a few things, there's a little bit of scour on the east abutment, and then, but most of it is just deck stuff. So what AECOM has otherwise identified and summarized in their report is the most economical approach to it is simply just to do a deck overlay, so we don't even have to strip it down to its abutments to the bare minings, we can, you know, leave the base there, there probably will be some areas of full depth repair to the bridge, but get that, and that will give us, for our dollars, the most life out of it, which is good to hear. And as I mentioned last time, we're kind of in that, if there is a sweet spot to have a bridge that is, you know, in need of repair, you know, we're kind of right there, let go for too many more years, and now it's going to be a full deck repair or an actual full replacement at a significant more cost. So I think we have hit it rather well, timely, and I think, again, your numbers looking at a total construction cost, you know, that half million dollars, so I think, again, with the money out there, I think we're, for that one, we're very well poised, I think, to get funding because the economics are there to do kind of the least amount of work that we need to to get the most life out of it, and I think it's in a good spot where, you know, comparatively to other projects, you know, within that program, that, you know, we have a good chance of actually getting the award on that one. So very, thinking very positively on that one, though no one wants to spend the money on it, I'm sure if we can get them to do it, all the better for what kind of is out of sight, out of mind there on the edge of town, unfortunately.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
We're good? Alder Person Shore?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my question does have to do more with division and Business 51, although...
Applying for the grants.
Yes, yes, it does. Although it's interesting to learn about, I guess, that sounded like a title search but for public property with the bridge. Business 51 is complicated in many ways, and one of them is timeline and sequencing. And I want to understand, I think I understand, but want to check how, how these applications work in relation to one another. Because I know we've talked about, well, a lot, a lot of the resources for the North End will come from the TIF, and therefore we'll be looking for more federal support for the Southern End. So here's what I think I understand, and please check me on this. So how our applications relate to one another is in two ways, and you touched on both. One is monies that have been granted to us, that keep an eye on whether it's being spread among the different applicants, and the other you just referred to as the money out there. So what I, what I think is that we are not, by seeking this money for the North End at a time when the pile of resources generally federally is very large, that is not going to trip us up for later applications we make for the South. Yes?
So to best understand, what we're hearing from representatives at the DOT is that that is correct. It's simply because there is that much money, they're asking, you know, local government to apply. You know, if you have a project, apply for it, even if you have, as we have been successful, even if you've applied for other projects or other programs, apply.
Or will later.
There's, there's just, yeah, there's just, the money's there, let's just get everything out there and try to get it. Because, yeah, if this was just in the traditional sense and we were chasing, you know, just the STP, or as it comes in its biennial cycle, yes, in that particular case, probably would be not, I'd be more apprehensive to be applying for more Business 51 at that time, simply because I wouldn't want to be asking for another, you know, our piece of the pie is starting to get very large, and we probably wouldn't get it, but because the pie is now so large, you know, it's a matter of that trying to chase what it is, because now, even if we get that same piece we wanted before with our big hungry eyes to fill our bellies, you know, there's plenty around for everyone else's, the general understanding of it, so they're saying, apply.
Okay, well, good?
Thank you.
Thank you. In the interest of transparency, I know there was some chatter going on, it's, it's not good for the public if there's whispering, so just in the future, if there's something to say, you have a microphone, we'll get that...
I was just going to, may I?
Absolutely.
I was just going to say, those were the same words that were spoken at a League of Municipalities training that Alder Shooter and I, Shuda and I were at on Friday, but they said the money is there, you know, encourage you to, you know, put in because it's substantial.
I forget exactly what STP Urban or what this round is, but the bridge program, I believe they said is ninety percent, you know, so nearly twice the funding level that it historically has been at, so there is, you know, considerably more money compared to what has been there historically.
Thank you, Alder Person Carlson, for bringing that question forward.
We were just discussing pies because he kept talking about pies.
And I was giving pies. I'm sorry.
Pie is always in order. All right, so with that, Alder Person Christiansen, we do need a motion, one way or the other.
Yes, I would move a approval of item three under the Finance Committee.
Thank you, seconded by...
Go ahead, Chuck.
We'll give it to Alder Person Carlson, the new guy. Shooter McGavin.
Sorry, Dan.
He'll come later. Any discussion, any further discussion on that item? The motion is to approve. Hearing none, clerk, can we get a roll there?
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerozua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number seven is a request from Bill Scherr for a facade improvement grant in the amount of forty-three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars to restore the front facade of a building located at ten forty Main Street with parcel identified in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second. Okay, we're going to give this...
You have a new guy.
Generally, the Alder Person for the district.
Right, yeah.
We'd get precedent there, we'd get special, whatever, we're good. We have a motion and a second to approve the facade grant, discussion there.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And perfect timing, Ryan, I'm sorry I didn't get ahold of you sooner, today was a crazy day, but are these grants specific to historical buildings, or are they just specific to TIF buildings, or what?
Good question.
I'm just curious, I couldn't find an answer.
Yep, so the facade improvement grant program is designed for any building that's located within TIF number six. That was the original TIF district that partially funded the facade improvement grant program. We, the majority of those facade improvements, it has to be a commercial business essentially, have occurred on Main Street. So like a residential property that's within that TIF number six would not be eligible for the facade improvement grant program.
I just was asked by other businesses outline, you know, if they're eligible for these, and I said, I'll find out, so...
Yeah, in a perfect world, we'd have more grant monies to provide for residential and other commercial businesses, but that's...
Thank you.
Hopefully sooner than later.
And for those watching and listening, TIF six is generally the downtown area, a map is available on our website. All right, and the other discussion. Hearing none, the motion is to approve, clerk, please call the roll.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerozua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And unanimous consent, that is done, approved. Item number eight is a revocable occupancy license to allow Century World to install media conduits within the right-of-way at North Point Drive in correlation with the USGA Men's Senior Open, which will be here in late June, early July of 2023.
Couldn't have said it better myself, Mayor. Pretty much, I'd like to move to approve this, please, I'm really looking forward to this, this is going to be a great thing for us, the entire, it's going to be a great thing for Stevens Point, and it's going to be a great, a great asset for everybody.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alder Person Christiansen, discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number nine is to award the synthetic turf replacement project for Community Stadium at Gerkey Park to Spin Turf, Sprint Turf LLC in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars and eighteen cents. As you know, Alder Persons, we are fronting the money for this project, almost all of it, other than about a four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and twenty thousand dollar city contribution, is going to be raised privately, and we're talking millions of dollars here. Alder Person Shore?
That's my cue. I move approval, obviously this is part of the larger, very exciting plan for many things to be done at both the stadium and the arena.
Okay, seconded by Fishler, discussion there.
It is going to be pretty impressive when it's all done, and I think it's really a great example of the fundraising they've been doing in the private-public partnership that's allowing the thing to come to fruition, but they're doing the lion's share, and kudos to them.
Thank you, Alder Person Christiansen, and it's my understanding that this should be installed before the fall season, so...
Wow.
Yep, nice agenda, or a nice timeline there, too. All right, and the other discussion. Hearing none, clerk, roll call, please.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerozua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number ten is a request to increase hours for the Director of the Riverfront Art Center and Parks Recreation and Forestry Department. To give you an idea, right now, we have a part-time director over there, there is always more work than there are hours in the day, but we are looking at extending the hours. If you were out at Arts Walk, Riverfront Art Center was open, so we're trying to extend the hours, do more, have more shows, and with that, we would seek permission to increase the hours to thirty hours per week for the Riverfront Arts Director. Director Kramer, anything to add?
The only thing I'll add is that it is a special revenue fund, so you'll take a look and you'll see it's been performing very well the last three years, so we have a rock star running that facility, we're really happy to have her, and we're really hopeful that this could go through tonight, so I appreciate the consideration.
Okay, Alder Zerozua?
I would move to approve.
Seconded by Carlson. Sorry, ginger.
That's all right.
Discussion.
This increases it from...
Twenty to thirty.
Twenty to thirty, thank you.
Per week. If you haven't been there recently, check it out. There's also a new call for exhibition stuff, right, Director?
Call for.
Call for.
Shooter McGavin, I'm going to have you all...
It is a golf thing.
Yes, there is, we just opened, there's an exhibit that just opened, and we're doing a call for art right now as well, for the next one.
There you go, and if someone wanted to put something in there, they would contact...
The Riverfront Art Center is open Wednesday through Sunday, so you can call directly down there, but our office can take calls all during the week as well.
There you go, just trying to plug some stuff.
Absolutely.